Evening, everybody. Welcome to the Board of Selectment meeting for March 14th, 2024 at 6:01 PM. Can I have everybody stand and pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, so everybody's aware, we are recording our meeting via WCAT6, our local access network. We are live streaming it on Facebook and we are also recording it and presenting it through Zoom. If anybody else is going to be recording anything, please let us know so we can let the rest of the public know that you're recording. Okay, when, if somebody's going to speak, please identify who you are and what your position with the town is to clarify with our social media requirement, the Zoom application requirement. Okay, first thing on the agenda is the Fire Department Monthly Report. Chief, you're up. We're getting worried about you. We're about to send Jerry out looking for you because you haven't been here in a while.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for having me. First, I was going to say I do apologize for my absence. We're working on updating all of our standard operating procedures and stuff for the Fire Department. So, we have a committee going right now that we're meeting on Thursday night. So, I've just been asked temporarily to be kind of absent a little bit here, obviously come in for certain things. But I've been asked to put it at the front of the agenda so I can, you know, excuse myself and go to another meeting. It's going to take us about a month and a half to get through this, you know, going forward. But we're making steady progress on it. So, it's not that I don't want to be here. It's just that we're kind of preoccupied right now with another mission. So... So, tonight I'm just presenting the February report for the Fire Department. We responded to 34 calls in February of 2024, or fire calls, I should say. Five of those included motor vehicle accidents, 10 medical assists, two activated alarms, one carbon monoxide call, three investigations. There was a false cancel six times. One service call, two structure fires, one chimney fire, one oil burning malfunction, one vehicle fire, and one electrical equipment malfunction. We responded to 66 calls in February for EMS and 18 ALS intercepts were acquired. We did a combination of six smoke and carbon monoxide inspections, which are commonly done anytime there's a sale or transfer of property. We did two oil burner inspections, three liquid propane inspections. We had a busy month for training. We did our annual CPR refresher for all firefighters and first responders as well as EMS personnel that needed it. We do several rounds throughout the year depending on people's expiration dates on their CPR card. So, last month was pretty heavy on getting people caught up with CPR that needed it. I continue to watch the FY '24 budget closely. We did have the water heater, which was approved by the board, which we thank you very much for allowing us to get that done. That was replaced at Station A. The cost was just under $4,000 for that. It may require a line item transfer or reserve account transfer, as we talked about before. I'm hoping that that may not be the case. But, you know, unfortunately, a $4,000 hit out of the budget at this time of year is tough. But we're doing the best we can with that. We have had a full-time employee that was injured on duty, injured off duty, excuse me. And we expect them to be out. So, we are incurring some overtime expenses because of that. I expect that hopefully he will be back in about a month and a half to two months. But it's about a three to four month healing process for the injury he incurred off duty. So, we're kind of all scrambling right now. I have three firefighters that are in the academy right now. So, we're also short some EMTs that are going through the academy at the moment. But we're making the best of who we have available and we're doing everything we can. So, very good. This is my report.
You're doing outstanding job, Chief. Thank you very much for everything you guys do and all the support. You know, I know your department supports you and they really appreciate everything you do for them too. So, do you guys have any questions about the Chief's report?
No, I don't.
Okay, let's move on. Oh, one thing I have a question about. Budgetary wise, you guys spend a lot of time up on the pike, okay?
Yeah.
Okay. With that, you have to go through the tolls and the town is being charged to use the tolls. Are you submitting those costs for the state to remove it? Because there's a process to remove those costs. And I know we talked about this before. So, if the Police Department goes on the pike or any emergency services, if you go up on the pike, you submit that and it gets, the fees get returned.
We talked about a process. We currently build the pike, you know, we have, there's a contract in place for us to build the Massachusetts Turnpike anyways for our responses when we do go up there. So, you know, so we do build the turnpike from time to time. At certain times of the year, for any time an ambulance goes up there, it's a lot of a certain amount. Anytime fire truck goes up there, it's a lot of an amount. We had talked about the tolls there. I talked to Jim about it. We were looking for a little bit more information to come back. I'm not aware of any other departments that actually do get reimbursed from them, but I mean, it is...
There's supposed to be. That's the thing, whether they know how to...
I did reach out to some fellow chiefs. I'm not aware of the process that that takes place. I know that, you know, there, you know, that's always been a thing ever since we have been on. It was much harder to deal with when the tolls were, toll booths were actually in place. But I mean, we can certainly continue to look into doing that. There are some, I do have some hesitations with that. It's, I think it's silly that we do get charged, but I also have some...
We're not getting a whole lot of money from going up on the pike either.
No, we're not. But we're also not getting charged. And the only reason I say this is because like, I don't know how it would go and how long it would take to start that process. But I also, you know, at the same time, I know that most other vehicles are dealing with the same thing. I don't know if it would create any bad blood for future endeavors of... I'm just saying if the town were to propose on ramp and or off ramp, I mean, I just don't know if it's a, if it's something you want to go down that path or not. We could certainly talk about it. I just don't know if that would create more of a problem than a help for, you know...
I don't think that's going to affect anything anyways.
Like I said, I mean, we can look at... I don't even know the first, I had asked him at one point to see if we could even identify contact person where we could even start that process. I don't even have that. I don't have a contact person if we can even...
We can get that information for you because we actually, because I talked with Rep. Smola and he researched it because, you know, he proposes laws and stuff. And I told him how this is kind of wrong and if there's way we can get a pass that excludes emergency responders from going through. And he didn't, he didn't even know this was a thing.
It is. It's just this weird thing that they do. And I 100% agree with you because like, you know, when you talks about municipal vehicles and emergency vehicles with like registrations and stuff, there's no fee for those. And so, this is really strange that they are charged.
And you're being called to respond to their accident on their property.
Yes, when most of the time, they're trying to go up there and I totally understand it. So, I mean, I think the biggest thing is I would have to identify who and what department that would even go through. Because it's not like it's pay by plate. It's not like it's, I don't know how to even...
So, there's an expense sheet you fill out. So, when you get, my understanding of the process was you get your Fast Lane verification for the month and you go through and you say, okay, all these are mass pike responses and you just put that on the form and you submit it to DOT and they refund the money.
The issue is I don't know who to submit it to because there's so many other departments that they go through. So, I just need to, because again, I don't know anybody else that's doing that. So, I just need to go in the right direction.
We can get that information.
Because I honestly don't know who to even submit it to because it's just, I don't know what department it is.
And that's money that we could be using elsewhere in the town instead of paying for you guys to go on a job that they're calling you to do.
I understand the principle and it doesn't make any sense. It's just, it's very strange that that was ever, ever a thing. I mean, I remember years ago I got a violation toll, you know, it was actually a violation. For some reason, the transponder on the truck or something didn't work right. And we actually got, in the mail was a picture of the front end of our fire truck with the license plate violation. And I was like, well, it's a fire truck. So, yeah.
So, yeah, we'll get that for you guys and then for the Police Department too. Because anything you guys respond to, you should be doing that and getting reimbursed for the money too, for the tolls.
So, you don't go through the maintenance ramps on 19?
We do.
Oh, you do?
But to get off the pike, they get charged.
We do. But if we get off, the problem with getting on and off the maintenance area is it's not a recognized on or off ramp, which means that if you were to, and they, they're, the tolls are assessed fully to the next, to the next, because they don't know where you get on. So, toll violators in general, if they do that, if they try to get on a maintenance area or something like that, and this happens quite a bit unfortunately, the reason why they put all the gates up even in Warren was because people were jumping off the pike who live in Warren constantly, unfortunately.
People still do it and sometimes it becomes a problem. With the troopers in there.
Yeah. But the problem for us is they, because of those issues and because of people doing that, they put up gates that restricted our access. So, people need to understand that comes with a consequence because it actually made it much harder for us to respond up there because they were forced to put in multiple other gates because there were so many toll offenders. You know, so that was a price that we ended up paying for that. So, you know, people need to really understand that there's a consequence to that once they realize how many people are doing that.
Are those seconds vital for you?
Yeah, they can be. I mean, right now, they just put two new gates up there, you know, and there was an issue with them being locked sometimes. So, we have to take, you know, those gates that they put in, we had to take time to get out of the truck, to unlock the gate, to open the gate, to get through the gate, to close the gate, to lock the gate, and then go on a, you know, so...
Minimum a remote control?
Yeah. So, well, they're just giant metal gates. Now, they have the, they have the pass gates with the cars. And they have the automatic ones that just were installed not that long ago. So, I mean, you know, the newer ones, but...
You have like a garage door opener?
Yeah, just a card, a gate card or something, which, you know, they're very strict about that access.
They can imagine somebody in the middle of death of life waiting for them to open the gate to get in, you know?
Well, unfortunately, that problem has been resolved. But like I said, we never had as many gates in that area as we did. But it was because there were so many toll violators that were getting off there. But what happens is, is that anyone that gets off and does that and they can't, they can't determine where the end, you know, where they were supposed to get off, they charge them for the full length of the vast pike for a certain area. So, you're actually getting charged more. If we were to go from the snowgate, from a, from the maintenance area now to the Palmer Snow Gate and get off there, we wouldn't get charged because we never actually hit a toll supposedly. But there are times where we have to get off in Palmer and now that they have the video surveillance everywhere, they just, those pictures are automatically generated and they just, they go. So, all of our vehicles are linked to an account, you know, just like anything else. Most of the time, we don't even have a transponder in the truck anymore. We just add the license plate to that and it's part of the account.
Yeah, okay.
So, yeah, let's follow with that. So, we're not getting charged toll anymore?
Yeah.
Or we're getting reimbursed for them? Because it's not fair.
Yeah, no, I agree that there should be an exemption for public safety, yes.
And Representative Smola did look into if there was a thing that would exempt you through. There is no exemption. It's just reimbursement.
Yeah. So, yeah, we'll have to do a pilot and see how that goes. Because that's, it could be a lot of, a lot of checks and balances on that one. Yeah.
All right. And then let's just move to the next thing with the Fire Department so we can let the Chief go. Because we also have, are you guys good with moving to item five?
Sure.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so item five is discussion on the fireman's letter to honor Dennis DeRozier, anticipated vote.
I think we already, we can just...
Yeah, we already did that, right?
No, you couldn't vote on it last time. So, you asked me to put it on so you could vote on it.
Yeah. So, I can just make a motion because we've already talked about it. I think we agreed it was good.
Yeah, we did.
All right.
Unless Chief wants to add anything about it?
This is the first time I've actually seen the letter, to be perfectly honest. So, yeah, this was just...
Do you want to read it first?
I can. I mean, I can. Dear Warren Select Board...
Well, you don't have to read it out loud. If you want to read it for yourself.
Well, I know generally, I mean, it was passed to me as to what it was. I mean, it was, it was, to my knowledge, it was an idea of some of our retired members, you know, as since Mr. DeRozier has retired from the Fire Department. They thought it would be, you know, a way to honor him for his many years, his 56 years of service to the town. And, you know, their intention was to have a day kind of, you know, named after him in his name because of all of his years of service. So, that was the understanding of it.
And then they elected you the committee, the ceremony leader now?
I have not been approached on this. So, this is the first time I've, I've seen it, but I mean, I...
He's going to lead the parade on August 26th.
I mean, I agree. I've known Dennis my entire career. I mean, Dennis has been on for many, many years. I mean, he's played a huge role in the department in more ways than I can even describe. You know, everything from awards banquet to Memorial Day to, you know, placing the flags on, you know, on the grave markers of our fallen firefighters to, you know, serving the department itself, to working on the ambulance. I mean, there's just been, he's, he's hands, he's involved in everything. He always has been. And, you know, he's obviously dedicated his, pretty much his entire adult life, his entire adult life to the town. You know, so I mean, there's, he's a, you know, you're never going to, you're never going to see someone else like, like him. You know, I mean, there's no, there's no doubt about it. He has a very, very special place in people's hearts. And he's one of those people that can diffuse a situation by walking into a room because everybody knows him. You know, they could be, you know, they walk in and they recognize him from all of his years in town. So, it's having someone like that, you know, for so long is a, it's a special thing. And when they, when they do retire, you know, it's, it does leave a, leave a hole. But, you know, I think this was an idea from, you know, several of the retired and some of the present members that they, you know, they wanted something to, you know, that the town would forever kind of have something and, you know, for everything he's done. I hope I summed it up okay. Like I said, it wasn't my, you know, this is something that was brought on by them. So...
We already supported it last meeting, but we didn't have it on the agenda to vote for it. So...
All right. So, I'll make a motion to proclaim August 26th, 2024 to be the Dennis DeRozier Day in the Town of Warren.
Second.
All in favor?
Richi Hucker, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye.
David Dufresne, aye. The motion passes unanimously. August 26th is now known as Dennis DeRozier's Day. May honor his service for the town. Thank you. Thank you very much. And then that's it for the Fire Department. I don't have anything else.
I'm sure it's on the calendar, on the calendar of the...
Thank you, John Dennis.
Excuse me, I want to do more in there.
Yeah, we're going to do him next. Yeah, we just want to make sure that he goes through his training. So...
Unless he wants to stay for the full meeting, we can move it down to comments. He doesn't want to stay? These are such great meetings.
All right. So, now we're done with the Fire Chief. Let's start working on the Police Chief. And let's move to item six. Are you guys okay with taking item six?
Yes, sir.
Yep.
Okay. So, discussion of possible vote to appoint, the appointment of Mr. Matthew Moran to rank of detective for a term of one year, anticipated vote. Big step?
It's a big step.
Come on up, gentlemen. Come on up. So, Chief.
So, with the leaving of detective now, does this slot open? So, I opened it to the two longest members of our department because I believe that they should be first by the apple. One would be Chris Bouchard and Officer Warren. Chris Bouchard is doing a great job as our court officer. So, we stayed there. So, Officer Warren was willing to accept the promotion to detective. We sat down in my office, spoke about what my expectations are. He expected, accepted all my expectations and is willing to become the next department's detective.
Very good. He doesn't have you washing his car now, does he?
That's lieutenant, right?
Oh, yeah. So, awesome choice. You know, Officer Moran has been an outstanding police officer in that town for a long time and is well-respected amongst the public and also amongst the town officials. So, I think great choice. This is something you're doing under your own free will. You want to do this, right?
Yes, that's correct.
All right. Which is awesome too, because detective position is a tough one at times. And, you know, I think you're very well qualified for this position and you have the mentality to be able to do this responsibly and fairly for all the community. So, I think it's a great choice. You have many good officers to choose from and obviously Officer Moran sticks out amongst them and I think good choice. So, do you have anything to say, sir?
Just thanks to the Chiefs, the Board and everybody for the kind words. And hopefully I can do the best for the town and continue to be involved in the community.
You've done a great job so far, sir, and I know you'll continue to do that even with the promotion. Just gives you more opportunity to do it more now. And we look forward to all the good things you can do from this point, building up your career. Definitely well-earned.
Great, thank you very much.
Do you have any questions for him, sir?
I'll just say prematurely, since we haven't made a motion, but congratulations.
Thank you very much.
I echo what this guy said. Everything's good.
All right. Does anybody else in town have any questions? No? All right.
I'll make a motion to appoint Matthew Moran to the rank of detective for a one-year term.
Second.
All in favor?
Richi Hucker, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye.
David Dufresne, aye. The motion passes unanimously. Sir, you are promoted to the rank of detective in the town.
Congratulations, sir. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Matt.
Help? You going to give him a copy bit or are you going to give it to the Chief?
I'll give it to the Chief.
Okay. He has to be sworn in, sorry. Sworn in as detective?
Yeah.
So, just remember, get him sworn in as detective. Congratulations. All right. Okay, moving back down to item two. Discussion on the town first right of refusal for the property located at Lot 18, Town Farm Road in Warren. Anticipated vote. So, everybody had the time to review?
Yeah.
The application, but... I want to go forward here. So, anybody have any questions about it? Sir, do you have any questions about it?
No, I don't.
This, do you have any questions, sir?
No, sir.
Mr. Farrar, did you have anything on this?
Nope.
It's a one-acre lot currently slated to be used as a residential home on that lot. It's a buildable lot. The location and the size of the lot wouldn't meet any town needs. So, I have no problem with waiving our right of first review refusal on this.
It's coming out of chapter.
It's coming out of chapter.
Tax implications.
So, everybody knows anytime a property is in Chapter 61A, which is an agricultural exemption for the assessed value of the property. So, they pay a lower tax. They pay 10 cents on the dollar on the tax. When they enter into that, it triggers an opportunity for the town if there's a need for it to take possession of that land by purchasing it. We don't just take it. We purchase the land at a fair market value and, but we get the first right at that land because of the exemption that, and the tax exemption that they've been given. So, in a property like this, it's a very small property. It's only an acre. It really doesn't meet any town requirements or needs for anything we would do with it. So, typically something like this, it's not really of a concern for the town. But we do get first shot at it if the town needs it. So, that's the purpose of this. And we have to say we don't and we waive that right to let that sale go through fully so it can be built on. I hope I explained that right. You think so?
Yeah, I know.
Yeah. Do you have any questions about it, sir?
No questions.
Okay. Do you want to make a motion? Are you good with it?
Yeah, yep. I'll make a motion to waive the town's first right of refusal for Lot 18 on Town Farm Road.
Second.
All in favor?
Richi Hucker, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye.
David Dufresne, aye. The motion passes unanimously. And we can move forward with the sale.
I think that needs to be notarized too, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I got the handout.
You're all set with that? Because you get here. There you go. Okay, next thing on the agenda is presentation from the Board of Health on an update on 24 North Street, 27 North Street, 38 Elm Street, and 200 O'Neil, and 102 Cory Hill Road, and 11 O'Neil. This list is getting longer now that you're coming to us.
Yeah, times we retire.
You just get on.
Yeah, there's no retiring.
All right, guys, I'll get the handouts.
Yeah, yep.
Okay. So, what I do is I basically went down all the properties that we have.
Make sure you identified.
Oh, Dan Tivod, Board of Health, resident of Warren. So, I went and made a list of all the properties that we have under scrutiny right now. And we'll start off with 200 O'Neil Road, West Warren.
Any pictures?
Not for this one. The pictures will be on tail end. Contacted the Rhode Island Sheriff's Office to serve Mr. Ma because nothing was coming back when we certified, sent certified email. So, on March 27th, we sent that out or contacted the sheriff, gave them that. As of 3/12/2024, the Sheriff's Office have not served him yet. Because it was on their itinerary to do it. So, we're supposed to be getting notification of when that happens and it hasn't happened yet.
Okay. So, currently they're behind, oh, they owe fines of 75,000?
75,300 minus the overdue taxes and utility bills and any water or sewer that's up there, which I don't think there is for sewer. And it might be on low water. We can't continue to apply fines until a notice of penalty is served to them. So, we're in a holding pattern right now. I'm still counting the days. And then once he gets notified, or we get notified that he has been served, then the days will start counting again. 24 North Street, West Warren. We sent a certified notice of penalty to Mr. Habib on 3/4. Green card has not come back yet. The current Board of Health fines are at 43,200 minus taxes and utilities.
So, when you say green card, that's the notification of being served? So when you say green card, that's the notification of being served of, of the, um,
Yeah, it seems though either they're not getting.
Different green card.
Not getting delivered or pays the post office, not bringing them back. So something's going on or they're not just signing it or acknowledging it. But typically when you send that out certified, postal delivery, our person has to wait for that guy to be signed in his presence and then takes it back with them. But for whatever reason, we haven't seen it yet. So. Um, twenty-seven North Street, West Warren. We sent a certified notice of penalty to Mr. Sanchez on two twenty-three, twenty-four. We did get the green card back, signed, but no date on it. So we don't know when he received it.
You start from the day he received it.
Exactly, that's what we're doing. So fines commenced, he hasn't made any attempt to contact us or anything, or set up a meeting. Um, so fines have commenced on that date and currently five thousand, uh, seven hundred dollars. Um, and let me throw this out there just for these three properties right now. I don't know what our, um, chances of collecting this money, if it keeps adding up, is gonna be.
Yeah, I mean.
You know, I mean, two hundred is at seventy-five thousand right now.
At some point it's gonna be the final.
At some point, we're just gonna say, hey, stop, and then we have to go to housing court with it.
Yeah. But didn't you say there's, it has to get over a certain fine level before you can even go to housing court? Isn't that something you had mentioned?
No, what I said was, if we have it at five hundred dollars, then we have to go to criminal court. If we go to three hundred dollars and find with three hundred, it stays in civil court.
Okay, got it. All right. So I give him opportunity, you served him, get the notice back, you don't get anything back. Give, how much time did you give him on the letter saying that?
I don't know whether he got it or not.
No, but on, on the application, how much did you give, how much time did you give him to respond back or pay the fine? So thirty days, if you don't get anything back, respond with a second letter. And then after that, good, and with the second letter, I would say.
Everything he sent is gonna have to be gone through sheriff.
Well, and that, that's where you do that. Say, this is a second letter of notice and you attach the first one in that, um, saying, we did it this way. Uh, you, you failed to, uh,
Respond.
respond back in an appropriate time. So now you're being served by the sheriff's department. You have thirty days to respond back or we go into housing court. And you just, each time it's stepping up.
We're also racking up costs on this too.
It, it is, but we're also racking up costs by just sitting there too.
Yeah.
And we can't, can't go down the same route that we've been going because the properties aren't getting fixed. They're getting into states of disrepair and it's causing po- public health issues for the rest of the community. Cause these houses have rats and stuff in them. So, you're doing what you're supposed to do.
Which we could automatically condemn it. But now we take ownership of some of that.
Yep.
So. All right, moving on to thirty-eight Elm Street. Um, walked by the house, well, it was two weeks ago now. Um, and noticed that the front porch, and you can turn on the pictures for this one. The front porch is literally falling off of the house. It is fully separated.
It's been like that for years.
No, cause I have pictures that I took when I originally went over there.
So it's even worse?
Yeah.
So it's actually detached from the house now?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, if you look at, yeah, this is the front step entryway going in. You see how it's declining off, pitching down? Go to the next one, please.
Look at like that right there, right?
See how far it's dropped? And look at this beam right here and what's down below it. Okay?
It's alive?
Yep, we'll see in the next about that one, um.
Which one?
This is the same property where we have the dog here.
Yeah, yeah.
These two. You see that? This is the, the support column. It's completely separated from the base.
Yeah, it's floating.
Yeah. Okay. Um, and there's another column further down, same thing. It's disconnected like.
Yeah, the roof is holding the column, that's how it works.
Yeah, the roof is supporting everything now. There's nothing wholly involved, the top of. So just a something, any point in time, I think you can follow it. And then if you look at this one here, I tried to blow it up, but if you look right in this corner here on your pictures, the pamphlet, you can see a giant hole in the soft of the eave. Just up by the towel line.
Mm-hmm, there's natural ventilation.
Rodent.
Rodents, infestations, squirrels, birds, whatever, they're around the perimeter of the house. And they're also on the, on the side porch, they, the whole eave of the side porch is all rotting out. Which is there. And then the, um, the other one, this one here just basically shows the condition of what it may look like on the inside of a house if you look at the windows.
Okay.
So, I would think that after seeing the porch the way it is, we might want to get the building inspector over there to do an inspection.
You good with that?
Yeah. Yeah, it's, it can't be safe.
Have the building inspector check the porch out. See if.
Thirty-eight Elm, right?
Thirty-eight Elm.
Well, is it just the porch he's gonna look at or?
Well, you can't go on the property.
Can't go in, yeah.
But he can observe things from the road.
From the outside.
And if the neighbor gives him permission to enter their property, he can observe the property over the fence, but he can't go on the property.
Right.
Is there people living there?
Yes.
Yes.
And they haven't paid taxes the entire time they own the house.
And they have another dog there. So they're in violation of their court order. Eleven O'Neil Road in Warren.
Guys might want to notify the UCO that there's a dog in that house.
Jim, can you, uh?
Eleven O'Neil Road in Warren, Mass. This property is currently uninhabitable. It is filled with swarms of flies and mold, um, and debris all over the place. The owner is in a nursing home and they said he will not become a homeowner.
And there's nobody living there or there?
There is nobody living there. There are family relatives around, but they seem to be distant from that particular resident. Um, want nothing to do with him and he wants nothing to do with them. There is no will. There is nothing that leaves property to anybody.
Now typically, if, even if the person passes away, do they have a spouse?
He does not.
Still go to next of kin, right?
Next of kin, they usually get the pension, yeah?
Somebody's estate.
What if they refuse it and say, no, I don't want it?
Yeah, it wouldn't.
Then it becomes a property, uh, abandoned, abandoned property.
Yep. So, um.
That's a tough one.
It is because also it's also structural, this would be on the outside.
And you can't even find, find the person because they're in a nursing home and there's nothing you could do with that. It's like, they're unable to pay.
Yeah.
Cause if they were, they wouldn't be in a nursing home.
I did send the notification to Tri Valley that the house is uninhabitable. Cause they're the ones who were picking them up and taking them places.
Is there a way of having somebody that can't take care of property anymore and can't, they may, they may not be, they know they're not gonna be going back there and they have nobody to leave it to, if they can just release the property to the town?
Yeah, I mean, that, that has happened sometimes.
Cause that might be a best route if it's just given to him. And if he's, I don't know the condition of the individual in any way, but if they're mentally competent and they're able to sign documents.
Well, that's the problem why he is in a nursing home and nobody has been.
Well, don't get into medical history.
No, I'm not. It's because he is cognitively sound. He knows where he's in.
Okay. So, that could be something that he'd be willing to do versus us trying to go through Land Corps and everything else to try to take it.
Yeah.
Because even if it is an abandoned property, we still have to go through Land Corps to have it deemed that way. If he signs over the property, at least we take the property and the, the town can auction it.
Yep.
So, and that would probably be the cheapest way of us doing this. Do you have anything on that, Mr. Farrar?
No, I mean, if he wanted to gift it to the town, I guess he could, you know, and it'd be up to the board of whether or not they want to accept it or not.
Well, in this situation, it's either accept it or go through a long legal battle to take it, to get it up to condition, you know?
And that, that just might tear it down.
Well, in, in either way. But it's like, you know, if the town auctions it, then a developer might say,
I want it.
Hey, I want that house. Yeah, I'm gonna rip it down and it's a buildable lot. I'll throw something else up on there. You know? Or a neighbor might buy it for auction just to tear it down. So they can have a bigger yard.
So, um, it's up to us to figure out what the disposition on it is gonna be. If we wanna do, do anything, we have to get contact with him.
Can you find out about that? If there's a way that we could ask him what he would like to do with the property? And what the form would be to, to fill out for him to gift it to the town? We can't tell him to do it. You know, he has to do it of his own free will. You know, this is something of his own free will, but if it helps him out because financially, cause he's still getting assessed taxes.
Yeah.
He, he wouldn't have to pay the taxes on it anymore. And if he knows he's never going there and he has nobody to leave it to, it might just be the best thing for him.
His whole thing was, you know, he kept telling his, um, social worker, just leave me be, I wanna die at home, period. That's it. Leaving. And that's, you know, where it's at. Last one we got is, um, twenty-nine Bacon Street. It's currently in receivership and litigation. We've been getting complaints from people that there's somebody living in that house.
So the squatters. Um, any activity at twenty-nine Bacon Street? Chief?
Not providing? No. Haven't heard of anything.
So right now it's going in receivership?
It's in receivership, it's been in receivership.
So it's not town property yet?
Not yet. But you can't be renting it out either.
Like can't be, um, still technically it's property until.
It's property, but we condemned it.
Because it's condemned.
You can't have people in it.
People shouldn't be living there because there's no occupancy.
And the house is even posted that way. All the doors.
What are your thoughts on that one, Chief? What do you need to, what do you need for your elements to approve?
No trespassing sign on the property. There's people in the house.
Ownership, really, the town hasn't taken ownership of it yet. It might, because it kinda limits what he can do.
That's what we all can do.
Because he might be authorized, people might be authorized to be there by the owner. And the owner's wrong because he's letting people live there because, but the people might not know. But if the people are just squatting there because they,
They know it's a.
It was an empty house, I figured I'm gonna move in. Well, you know, you trespassing. But then.
Has to come.
It has to come from the property owner. So it's kinda in that gray zone because police really can't do anything there.
And you.
I don't know, right? I don't know. Jim, what's your thoughts?
Well, I think, um, because it's currently in, in receivership and in litigation, you, you, you're, you're kinda stuck in a predicament here. Um, cause it hasn't gone through the, the receivership property, you know?
Until it does, you know, the town, the town has it.
All right. Well, until a court reports, uh, appoints a receiver, yeah.
You have any thoughts? No?
Yeah, it sounds like there's not much we can do.
There's not much we can do, but we can at least keep an eye on the property in case they ask, well, I just don't wanna see the house all of a sudden burn down. If it's in that neighborhood, it can take off real quick. Our house is in that neighborhood.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, we don't want any, any fires going on or anything like that. Is it probably, is it electricity in the house?
Not that I know of. People have said they've seen lights in the house.
There is? You know there is?
I've seen the lights.
Well, are you seeing light or is there electricity in the house?
Uh.
Because somebody might just have lanterns.
Running candles.
Or running a generator out back.
From Thanksgiving to the first of the year, there were Christmas lights. You can search through the book. And I was told by Dave Johnson of the Warren Water Department that that water has been turned off since before it went into receivership.
Then nobody should be living there.
There's no water, if there's no.
Cause there's no water, because there's no sanitary.
There's no heat in our house.
So then, then it would fall under violation of Board of Health order.
Yeah, still, still, if a complaint is made.
Well, I think at that point, because it's under, there's no water in the house.
Right.
And it's condemned by the Board of Health and there's an open, there's a, there's a valid order on the house not to have any occupancy, isn't it? I think if you guys go there and have a police officer, you could do a knock and advise. Chief? So if you just do a knock and say, hey, you know, nobody's supposed to be living here, cause there's a Board of Health.
It's not wrong with that, man. Just inquiring.
Yeah.
Get to yellow with the one, seven up.
Yeah, do a knock. Yeah, if you see lights on and stuff and you see people, you see activity in the house.
Right now it's too late to see anything. I was gonna go by early in the morning, see if I see anything.
What number is that?
Twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine Bacon. You gonna send somebody by now?
Yeah, it'd be better to do the evening, cause then people are.
Well, it's getting dark now, so people would have lights on and they'd be out moving around. It's easier to see them. Are the windows obstructed? You can see right in?
I want stops change between that last fire and now.
There's nothing that you see as a conflict there, right? The Board of Health, or?
Right.
They could knock on the door and say, hey, are you living here?
Right.
And if they say, yeah, I live here.
It just, it'll get on the inspection.
Yep. All right.
Well, we're gonna, um, and that's, that's pretty much the hit list right now. Um, there is a potential for one oh two, Coy Hill Road.
What's going on up there?
She is with Tri Valley. They were supposed to be going in, visiting, taking care of stuff in the house and doing her grocery stuff and everything else. I guess they decided they didn't wanna do it anymore. Found her outside. Adam got a call up there one day. Um, they found her outside on the ground. So they took her to the hospital. She got sent back home by a third-party service, another ambulance company. And they dropped her outside the house and left her there. Adam got called up again. Went back to the hospital again. Um, I don't know if she's come back yet. Um, but Adam says, I almost called you again because the house is just as bad, if not worse than it was the last time.
Very.
That hasn't, you know, Adam didn't give me the official yet, but it's out there.
Okay. It's on the radar.
It's all good.
Please, sir.
I think that's enough.
I did, I did receive a call yesterday and I, I stepped out, uh, to go to two fifty Reed Street.
Yeah.
Uh, with regards to their next door neighbor having a concern of, uh, of the live animals. Yeah, animal feces and the sanitary issues over there.
Over to the, um, the wetland area.
Wetland area, yeah.
Yeah, supposedly building or pushing buildings into that area as well.
Right, right.
And I tried to, I left a note for your.
The ACL.
Yeah, we left a message for her. I'm just waiting for a callback.
Okay. I did stop by there yesterday and I, I looked at it, at the stuff. I mean, it's, it's pretty clear that there's stuff going on there that's, you know, probably needs to be addressed at some point.
Yeah, but again, we don't have a community in the whole, does not have an animal control plan. So you really can't.
There's no. There's no, um, bylaws.
Right.
On farm or agricultural animals.
Right.
In the town of Warren. Um, because we are not officially a right-to-farm community. And unless we do a right-to-farm community designation, um, there are no laws or bylaws governing.
You have to refer to the state.
Right. And the state is very vague and allows a lot as long as, my understanding is, as long as it's food, water, shelter. That's all they care about.
Well, now, from what, from what the complaint is, it's starting to impact wetland areas.
Yeah, and then that would fall under conservation. Because that would trigger jurisdiction for conservation if the wetland areas are being contaminated through animal feces, particularly farm animals. That would have to be a complaint within conservation. Cause then they would go over and they can heavy penalties on that.
Yeah, I told them. I did tell them I was gonna forward that to conservation, to conservation.
Yeah.
Cause that's where it really should.
Yeah. Yeah.
So. She's gonna be the owner of one of the properties. I'm not sure which one it is, is gonna be at the Board of Health meeting next Wednesday.
Okay. You, because there are concerns with conservation, they should be notified at this point. So they can be tracking and, you know, maybe schedule something and do an inspection or call them in here about that. Um, and they'll, they'll, they'll evaluate it if it is a wetland area. And they'll make a judgment if it's being contaminated in some way. So, but that's them, that's their jurisdiction and they, they definitely have authority within that situation.
Yeah. So, I, you know, I told those followers on conservation, see where, what they can do. They should be at that, and they should have had it. Well, not today, one day.
Okay. Um, anything else, sir?
Nope. You got any questions?
Do you have any questions?
No.
Do you have anything?
No, sir.
Do you have anything? Uh, no, you're doing a great job. Thank you very much. Unfortunately, we have a few of these properties in town and nobody was doing anything about them, so now, now the town, they're on the radar. And Board of Health and the departments that have, uh, jurisdiction within some of these issues are doing it. And we just got a new building inspector, um, and he's very much by the book and, um, he's in town all the time. Even though it's not a full-time position here in town, he is here quite a bit, so.
Yes, I'm.
Have you talked to him about any of this yet?
Not yet. It was in passing.
Okay.
Cause I wanted to get down there and talk to him about the different twenty-four and thirty-eight.
And, and, you know, we, we all gotta understand that different departments have different jurisdictions and what triggers that authority, that ability. And, you know. Public health issues aren't a building issue.
No.
But a building falling off, uh, prop, structures separating from a house would probably definitely fit in.
If I'm getting called in to the Board of Health or Board of Health inspection, you know damn well, if it's that bad, there is structural issues. And where that's part of my background, so I know. So.
Alright.
But, yeah, um, any other questions? You got my phone on, right? You know how to get through me.
Yep. Alright, thank you. Think he just triggered something here.
Kinda looks that way, doesn't it?
Yeah. Alright, so moving on. Thank you very much. And nobody has anything else? Alright, uh, moving on is acknowledgement of the resignation of Julie Colton Tolson. Okay. So, um, my understanding Julie is gonna be taking on, uh, and moving on to another opportunity in her life. And we wish her the best and, you know, it's sad to see people go and, um. But then new people come.
Are these, are these the same?
Yeah, for some reason, she did one for the tax collector, but she put the same one on both. So, I don't know.
Okay.
One for tax collector and one for Dawn, so.
Okay.
So, in her resignation, she says she appreciates all the support that I have received during my time, both offices. Uh, please keep the file on record and official notice and as good faith. Again, she's done a great job here and we wish her the best of luck and, you know, gonna have to hire for the position now. Alright, anybody have anything?
No.
Okay. Um, are they already working on putting out a hiring action?
Yeah, so, uh, um, it's Dawn and, um, and, uh, Carrie, um, will be, um, leading that, that, um, hiring. Um, I, I'm sure that I will be working with them and we're gonna, uh, try to see if we could potentially maybe, uh, keep that position somewhat the same as it was. Uh, for Julie, um, where it's combined. If we could, you know, potentially work that out, that would be helpful.
Alright, very good. Do you have anything, sir?
No, sir.
Alright, moving on. Discussion on the new fee schedule for the building department and the building, um, valuation data anticipated vote. Okay, this is item number seven.
The first sheet is the current. The second sheet is the new.
So is this the new building inspector proposing this?
Yes.
Yes.
So what has actually changed?
From six to seven point five, most of it.
But it looks like he's maybe changing the calculations to.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Or he's giving an example. Yeah, he's giving an example.
Swimming pools went up forty dollars.
Hmm?
Swimming pools went up forty dollars.
On the above ground.
From sixty to a hundred?
Yeah.
Yeah, some things went down and some things went up.
Solar array. I'm guessing this is for residential, right?
Yeah.
Yes. Permit fee for signs went down to ten dollars. Above ground went down ten dollars, too. He's added a few things on here, like electrical storage.
Yeah.
Which that's something we were gonna address anyways, eventually.
When it's for commercial, that should be a lot higher.
Well, he's doing it per watt. So that would definitely go up.
Yeah.
When you're deal, dealing with megawatts and stuff. So.
Yeah, the biggest one is new construction. It's going one and a half more. I think it's okay.
It would appear that the current, uh, fee schedule was approved in twenty-two.
Yeah. Yeah, I remember this. It was very low.
Yeah, it was a lot lower. BJ raised it up quite a bit.
Okay.
And the building, um, data sheet that is in the back comes out and he goes by that quite a bit.
So this is what the. The building commissioners.
International code recommends.
Code recommendations for all this. So this is just going in guidance with.
With the international code, yeah.
Okay. Do you guys have any questions?
No, I'm good with it.
Do you have any questions, sir?
No, it looks okay. It's just updating. It's updated to current prices.
Hasn't been updated in two years. So, alright. If you guys are good with it, let's go motion.
Alright, I'll make a motion to approve the new fee schedule for, uh, the building department, um.
Effective April first.
Yeah, effective April first, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
All in favor?
Richi Hocker, aye.
Derek Phillips, aye.
David Dupre, aye. The motion passes unanimously. It is approved. Okay. Alright, next thing on the agenda, discussion on items for Board of Selectmen to consider for capital planning anticipated vote.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
Yes.
I had put together a, um, a, um, a request form. I know we had talked about it at the last meeting. Um, there's another re- request form that I'm working on because I'm still getting some, some additional pricing. Uh, but as part of our capital plan, um, the repointing work around this building in particular. Um, you know, needs to be addressed to continue to preserve the useful life of this building and to prevent any further water damage that has been damaging the vehi- uh, the, 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 uh, building. Estimated cost, I, I did call a couple contractors, uh, to get some estimates. Um, I haven't had actually one come out to do, uh, an actual inspection. Uh, so in that case scenario, I reached out to the town of Ware who recently repointed their, um, their town offices, their town hall. And, uh, to try to get a gauge as to what they were paying per square foot for repointing work. They were paying at the time twenty-five dollars per square foot for the repointing work that they had done. Uh, but that was in twenty-one, you know, basing it upon, you know, three years later, uh, inflation, um, you know. I'm estimating it somewhere around thirty-five dollars, um, a square foot for the repointing work. The replacement of the brick work, uh, per square foot, uh, they, they were able to get a price of about a hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, I, again, that was three years ago. Times have changed a little bit. You know, I'm estimating it at, at, at two hundred dollars a square foot. Um, and for the sealant installation and miscellaneous, uh, sealant, uh, um, they were able to get it at, at forty dollars per linear feet. Again, I, I, um, I'm estimating it at, at sixty dollars per linear feet. Um, for a, um, for a company to come in and, and to do some of the, the work that is required. Now, this is all per square foot, so I mean, you know, depending on how much work you wanted to have done, if you only wanted to have certain sections done, the worst sections, um, you know, that's a discussion. If you wanted to do the entire building, uh, that's another discussion. Um, you know, uh, I think in, in, um, in Ware, they were only, they only had the ability to really address, you know, a, a, a certain section. Uh, that was really problemsome and problematic. Um, their total, you know, cost was somewhere around a, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars when it was all said and done. Um, you know, depending on how much square foot you wanted to do, um, with costs, you know, could be anywhere from, you know, two fifty, you know, ish, depending on, you know, how much square foot you wanted to do.
I think, I think we should probably have, see if the building, um, inspector can look.
Mm-hmm.
And see what's maybe the worst.
Yep.
Of the building, because we might not have to do the front.
Mm-hmm.
But the back.
Yep.
Is, is, it's getting bad. Might have to get away with just the back or maybe a side, but.
Mm-hmm.
You know, if they can, he can walk around and just kinda check and say, hey.
These are priority areas.
These are priority areas and, you know, if I had to choose, you gotta do this one and then maybe the front can la- last a little longer or vice versa. Or he might just turn around and say, you gotta do it all.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
You know, but at least we can get, you know, he's.
Yep.
Trained on that, so.
I will, I will coordinate with him this week. Um, this is just to give you an idea of, you know, where we are with some of this stuff. I, I am also another, the other request that I'm working on.
So before we move on, with that one, I would see, get, get, um, his idea of what's the, you know. Which one has to do, be done the most. And if we can get by a little bit on the other ones, we're okay. But then I would get a, evaluate a price.
For the whole thing.
For the whole thing. Because if we can do the whole thing, that would be the best, cause then we don't have to worry about it because the cost is just gonna get higher and higher and higher. But if we can't, then we'll just take care of what we absolutely have to now.
Yeah.
But again, that's how we get into these situations like the old town hall. We do just a little bit and then the rest. Cause we do bare minimum. I don't know. You good with that?
Yeah.
Yes, let the experts, you know, tell us this.
Yep.
So the, the, the second one also that I don't have a sheet ready yet for this is because I don't have any pricing yet, but, um, computers and, and working on, uh, upgrading all our computers. And I know we talked, um, to, uh, some IT people, um, and we, we potentially may have a, you know, a, a, a different IT provider. Um, and if that's the case, then we would be working with whoever the, the board has chosen. Um, and, you know, you know, I'd have to see what exactly there's, you know, versus buying, versus leasing. You know, I, the last company that was in here does lease them. Our current company does not lease them. Um, so, you know, there's, you know, there's, there's all that information that we have to gather, um, so that.
Are we, we gonna evaluate a third company now?
Yep, next week.
Okay, great.
Yep.
Okay. So I think at that point, we can make a, a decision. Because now we have three companies that we're looking at and two of them are on the state list.
Yeah, you may, you may get, uh, you may actually have, um, two companies next week.
Oh.
Okay. Definitely one, possibly two.
Okay.
Well, cause, yeah, we've only talked to one, right?
Entrez, yep.
Yeah.
And they seem very good.
So that's kinda where we are with the capital stuff and we'll have some more, um, numbers, um, next week.
Okay, great. Thank you very much, sir. Alright, um. So, we're making a motion?
Um, no, just to table it, yeah.
Alright, so we're just tabling it. Alright, discussion on possible implementa- implementa- uh, implementation of bi-weekly payroll for all town employees. Currently, they're being paid weekly, right?
Correct.
So where is this coming from?
So this is part of one of the recommendations from the Department of Revenue, uh, when they did our analysis last year. Um, on, you know, ways that we could improve ourselves and, and put in some more efficiencies. Um, you know, I've had some preliminary discussions with a couple different departments, um, on this. I'm waiting for some information back from the treasurer with regards to, um, you know, potential savings there and, you know, what type of implementation it would, it would require. Um, but I just wanna, I just threw this on the agenda just as a discussion topic to start the discussion, to see if the board is interested in this. If the board is not interested in this, then that's perfectly fine, um, uh, and we can, you know, move on from here. But I think that there's an opportunity for us to, uh, free up some, um, some, some, um, some resources that are done every week with, in terms of having the accountants off. some resources that are done every week with, in terms of having the accountant's office process the payroll and the treasurer go through the payroll and submit it every week. I think there's a, there's, there's some, some time that we could be a little bit more efficient and we could do it every, every other week. Although departments would still have to have their, um, weekly payroll, um, you know, collected. They wouldn't have to s- submit till the following week. Um, I think would, would, would make some things more efficient, uh, for both of those offices. Um, that can be hectic in, in, at times. Um, as well as the potential of saving some money. Um, you know, uh, with our, uh, our check processing and Harper's payroll. Instead of having it every week, you know, processing it every other week, there's a, you know, there's a potential of a little bit of savings there as well. Um, this was a recommendation. Um, right now, the, it's, it's currently in the contract to the Patrolman's Union, uh, that, uh, they, they, they have no objection to it as long as everybody else in town does it. So, um, if, uh, you know, there's
So how is it taken so far by employees of the town?
Well, I think that there's, there's, there's pros and cons. Don't get, don't get me wrong. Um, there's, you know, there's some people that are, are cautious about it and, and are cognizant that they'd have to change their, their budgeting practices and I totally understand that. I totally get that. Um, and then there's some, then there's some notions out there that, that they're gonna be taxed more. And that's not the case. That, 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 that's a, that's a mis- that's a misnomer. And so I think with some education on that piece, you know, uh, we could, you know, we could potentially clear that up. Um, you know, maybe a little bit different with budgeting, uh, but a lot of communities and a lot of, you know, uh, a lot of industry are, are bi-weekly payroll.
They get biwi- bi-weekly and it's, it's fine. You expect it. It's, you know when you're getting paid. You seem like you're making more money because you got a bigger check, even though it's just because it's two checks added together. So I, 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 we don't have any problems with it, but I know we suggested, we suggested this a while ago. And there was a little bit of pushback from employees, uh, that they weren't too fond of something like that.
Mm-hmm.
Because it does save money for the town, because you don't have to process payroll every week. You play, process it every two weeks. And when you do that, you're saving, instead of doing fifty-two cha- pay processes, you're only doing twenty-six pay processes. So it, it saves the town money. Um, and it really didn't change anything in my life. I just know I get paid every other week. So wasn't an issue. What do you guys think, sir?
So do we issue, um, like I just got for the stipend, right? I get a paper
Yep.
dummy check.
Yep.
Do we issue those every week?
Yes.
Okay. So right there, you're gonna save money because those are expensive.
You've cut back a lot of your services, yeah.
You know, when you buy them for your bank, they're very expensive. And then you get the, the, uh, larger size, the business size, and they're even more expensive. So right there, you're gonna save money. Do you have a thing?
Do we know how much money we would be saving in payroll expenses?
I, I have that. I, I've asked the treasurer to calculate that. Again, this is just an initial discussion. I'll have a little bit more of an analysis done for you in the future. I just wanted the board to try to, you know, maybe start thinking about it.
How many people get direct deposit?
There's quite a few. Uh, majority of people nowadays are on direct deposit. There may be one or two people that are not. But, um, I think the treasurer has made, uh, uh, significant strides of getting everybody on direct deposit.
So why, why am I even getting a check if I'm direct deposit, a dummy check?
You still have to provide documentation that
Yeah, but can it be emailed or, you know?
I'm not sure if they're, if they, you know, you know, there's, there's, there's other things where there's, you know, like a web access, you know, so
Yeah, like I go. My son has that with the place he works from. He goes to the
You know, there's a, there's web, but that costs money, you know?
Sure, yeah.
So, um, I think probably the, the cheapest way is, is, is that. It'd be even cheaper if you were able to go twenty-six weeks instead of the fifty-two.
We, we can look in, you know, the web access too, because again, you know, I, I get paid. I get what's called an LES, Leaving Arronance Statement. And that is all online. I go on a website and that website has everything on there. It tells me what I got, how much time I've taken off, my leave balances, all that stuff are in there. And, you know, at the end of the year during tax season, my W-two's get put right on there.
Mm-hmm.
So it's all automated and it's all electronic. So everything's right there. There's no sending anything to anybody. And then it's up to the employee. If I want to print up every one of my statements, I can print up every one of my statements. But you're also, there's supposed to be a reduction in, um, you know, like
Paper.
using paper. And that's kind of an incentive by the state and the government to, to reduce the paper. It could be something, may, maybe it's, if it's more, then it's more. But, uh, if it's the same price or cheaper, it's probably something we might want to go to.
We can look in. It's like, called like a, a time and attendance system, you know? It's, it's like, you know, that's what the, the modular would be. And I'm sure Harper's or maybe even VEDAR may have a, a modular like that.
Well, who, um, who cuts the, these checks?
Harper's.
Okay, so Harper's may already have
Yeah, a time and attendance.
Yeah.
Currently, you know, it's a, you know, it's a, the time and attendance is administered by the, uh, town accountant, you know? So, you know, they track the vacation hours and, and, and stuff like that. But if you had your, your, a system like a time and attendance, they, you know,
Yeah.
that, again, would streamline approach, would, you know, take that, that obstacle away from having to, you know, to do that when it could be automatically automated, you know?
Yep.
Like calculation.
So with us, we have a, that software. We have ATAPS, which is automated ti- time and accounting, something software, processing software. So as an employee, I go in and I put my time in, okay? If I take a day of leave, I submit a leave request.
Mm-hmm.
That leave request goes to my supervisor. My supervisor clicks on approve. And now I get that leave approved, or they click deny.
Mm-hmm.
And it's denied.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, but then it automatically records everything in the system.
Right.
And then for payroll, I put in all my time. It's, it's all counted there. And I, I concur it. And then my supervisor goes and looks at it and says, yep, all your time is good. They click approve and it gets submitted to the certifying official and the certif- uh, well, the, you know, your, um, your payroll system. And they look at it and say, yep, everything appears to be correct and you get paid based on that. So every employee is responsible for putting in their own time. If you do overtime, you submit an overtime request. That, that request goes to your supervisor. And your supervisor goes approve or deny. Um, but they give justification why, why that, that, um, overtime is there. And at, at any time, an administrator of the system can look at it and say, how, how much overtime is worked? Because you pull sheets and it'll tell you exact, exactly who's working all this overtime. Or you could do a mass spreadsheet of all the overtime that's being calculated in the community. So that's, that's how we kind of do it and it seems to work really well. It was pushback at first with it, with the union. And once everybody realized, wow, this is a lot more streamlined and a lot more efficient. And it really cuts down a lot of stuff because then you don't have somebody that's, somebody that's inputting your information in a system or sending it to somebody else. And there can be mistakes made in that process. And people get really upset when you don't give them their overtime or you took away too many leave hours from them. They're responsible for that because they said, yes, I concur with my time. That's correct. And the supervisor just reviews it, makes sure it's accurate and approves it.
Mm-hmm.
So I don't know if there's something like that
Well, I'm sure there is. I'm sure we can, you know, we can, uh, work with
Maybe something with VEDAR or something, is something like that on there.
They may have a modular. Uh, Harper's, I'm sure has a modular.
And I, I, that's, that's the other thing I don't really understand. We're paying, we have an accountant, but yet we're paying another service to do that.
Mm-hmm.
And now we have an updated system. At some point, are we gonna say, okay, well, let's use what we have available to us or we're gonna continue paying somebody else?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Is that something the new accountant could look into?
In terms of?
Well, like can we do a payroll through VEDAR as opposed to Harper's?
Yeah, I mean, I can call VEDAR to see if they have a modular. Um, I, I think they don't have a time and attendance modular. I think Munis does, but I don't think VEDAR does. Um, so therefore then we would have to probably, uh, trans, you know, to contact our, our Harpers to see if they have a, I think they do. They, they have a time and attendance modular. Our, our payroll check people.
Because that might make it easier for them too, because if we were doing every, all the processing here
Mm-hmm.
and all the, the entry here, that might bring down the price because now they're doing less.
Mm-hmm. I think there's a Harper's interface with VEDAR. That's how it, it interfaces, but they don't have their own modular per se.
Yeah, if you can look into it.
Yeah, I will.
And, you know, because I'm on board with doing the two weeks, but let's see how we can do it. And there's always gonna be some people that may not like it because it's change.
Yeah.
But we're not taking pay from them. They're just getting paid every other week instead of every week.
Yeah. In a, in a small community like us, that we don't have an army of staff people.
Right.
You know, if we can free up, you know, a little time here for each department, it, it, it does, does help out the efficiencies of the departments.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Okay.
I'll look into it.
Yes, Mr. Conrad?
Uh, I, my last job, I was on the two-week schedule. I would say if you're going to accept this, notify the employees a month ahead.
Totally.
Because that way they can save a little out of their paycheck for that first shock week.
Well, this is something that would be put out
Yeah, months and a half.
a long time before it happens. Everybody would know it's coming and what day it's gonna happen. Yeah, it's not something we'd vote on tonight and it's not happening tomorrow.
Yeah.
It's, it's a long process.
Fiscal year, you know?
Yeah. And, you know, anything we could do to save the town a little more money, um, that frees up cash for other things.
Well, I, I know when I retired, went on social security and that was a big drop.
Well, you get monthly now, right?
Yeah, but with me, it's the third Wednesday of the month.
Oh.
They go by last number of your social security.
Okay. All right. What do you got? What's your thoughts on it, Mr. Williams?
I'm okay with two weeks. Just look into it.
Okay. I'll get some newer information and report back to the board.
Yeah, fine. Okay.
And see if there's a software out there that we can do
I will.
the account, the time and attendance stuff. Because right now, everything's done with a paperwork, right?
Correct.
All right. So, all right, we're over there and we'll go with that. Now, discussion and approval of the fiscal of the year, two thousand twenty-five Board of Selectmen budget anticipated vote. Do we have the numbers now?
So, yes. Uh, we did get the breakdown from, um, the insurance. So the liability, uh, insurance is at a hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars. That gives us a little bit of a cushion in case
Selectmen B, right?
Yes, Selectmen D, yep.
D.
Uh, D, yep, in, in case of, um, you know, adding a, a vehicle or something during the year or a deductible. The workers' compensation, uh, we're at fifty-one thousand dollars. Um, and that, uh, is, uh, with all of our, um, credits and, and different things that could potentially be applied. Uh, that's where we are. Insurance rates have gone up, uh, for both workers' comp and injured on duty.
So for, um, insurance, uh, insurance liability, it went up nine thousand dollars.
Right.
So that's a seven point eight-nine percent increase. And for the workers' comp, it's, went up five thousand dollars, which is a ten point eight-seven percent increase in costs. It, not happy about it, but we have no choice but to pay.
Mm-hmm.
So we got our numbers now.
Look at our overall increase is six percent, which isn't bad considering that, that insurance stuff went up, legal budget's gotta go up.
Municipal finance software went up.
That went up. So it's not bad. I, I was fearing it was gonna be a lot bigger percentage, but
We were able to trim some areas and we could potentially still trim, right?
Yep.
With, um, managed IT.
Yep, yeah, right. All right.
Do you have any questions, sir?
No, it, it looks good. Um, yeah.
Any questions, sir?
No, sir.
I think everybody did their due diligence and we worked hard on getting it as low as we can. And unfortunately, costs go up and it's the nature of the world we're in now.
Voting on this yet or?
Um, unless you want to wait till next week on your, to hear the additional proposals.
Yeah, sure. Okay.
Yeah, let's wait.
Well, if you want to wait, we can wait, but we already know the highest number is this unless we want to wait till narrow it down more if we can.
If you, if you, it's totally up to you. I, I did, uh, inform FinCom of, of what we're looking, you know, what the board has been talking about and that they're still waiting on a number for managed IT services. So they're well aware of that, of that. Um, if the board wants to prove it tonight.
Good with that or they
Yeah, they understand. They understand that. They've seen it.
Yep. Okay, all right. So let's table it till next week then and we'll do our vote next week.
Mm-hmm.
Um, because then we'll, we'll know at that point who's the best opportunity for us for IT services and stuff. And we might be able to narrow it down a little more.
Yep.
And get that, from that six percent increase, maybe down to five or four.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah, you don't have that twenty-nine. All right.
Cool. All right, let's table it till next week. All right. Next thing on the agenda, agenda are warrants and bills. Anticipated vote. Warrants first.
Number fifty, uh, make a motion to pay the following warrants. Number fifty-three payroll, sixty-three thousand seventy-nine dollars and fifty-four cents. Number fifty-four vendor, three hundred and twenty-one thousand three hundred and thirty-six dollars and sixty-seven cents.
Second.
All in favor?
Richai Hocker, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye.
David Dufresne, aye. The motion passes unanimously. Bills?
Make a motion to pay the following bills. WB Mason, forty dollars ninety-eight cents. Modern Pest, a hundred eight dollars. Crystal Rock, five dollars twenty-nine cents. Stericycle, hundred and twenty-one dollars and twenty-five cents. Verizon, nine dollars eighty-one cents. National Grid, thirty-three hundred seventy-eight dollars and ninety cents. Security and Fire Integrations, two hundred eighty-one dollars and twenty-five cents. Easy True Values, seven dollars seventy-eight cents. Weston and Sampson, one thousand dollars.
Second. All in favor?
Richai Hocker, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye.
David Dufresne, aye. The motion passes unanimously. Bills are paid. Okay, minutes.
Make a motion to accept the minutes from March seventh, twenty-twenty-four.
Second.
All in favor?
Richai Hocker, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye.
David Dufresne, aye. The motion passes unanimously. Why aren't we doing the twenty, twenty-nine?
Because they came at eight this morning and I didn't have any time to look at them.
Because I thought I'd send them on Monday and I didn't.
Yeah.
Okay, sorry. Thank you. All right, Town Administrator Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Um, I, I do want to let the board know that we received this week demo units from Verizon, um, for the One Talk, um, four G LTE desktops, T-sixty-seven LTE. Um, they, uh, came in this week. Um, I tried one out in my office for a day. It seemed to work fine for me. Um, I, I passed it along to
You got it in your office?
I do. Did you go look at it?
You want, no, you want to grab it?
Sure.
Yep. Uh, I passed it along to the Selectmen's office and I asked Karen to play around with it and, uh, test it out to see if it, um, is working. Um, and so far, so good. Um, I have also given one to Chief Lavoy. Um, I gave Chief Lavoy a desktop and I gave him a cell phone as well, uh, to test out. Uh, the desktop seemed to be working fine for him. Uh, the cell phone seemed to be also working fine, although the cell phone that they sent out were Androids. They would prefer, uh, um, uh, Apple. Uh, that's what they're customy- customarily using. Um, so, um,
What's wrong with Android?
Apple.
I got Android. They are. They, they're like, oh, I want, I don't want that caviar, I want this caviar. Come on now.
So, um, the, um, so he, he's, he's using them. And then as soon as Adam has finished his, um, um, his demo, he's going to hand it off to Chief Mallett, uh, at the, um, at the police station so that they can, um, have the ability to test it out over there. I also provided a, a cellphone unit to Sharon down at the senior center to have her test it out down there. We are also, I contacted Travis. Um, and in that particular area, the senior center and the wastewater treatment plant facility may need a booster. And Verizon has also sent us out a booster to test out. And we are going to set that up tomorrow morning, myself and Travis down at the senior center, uh, to get that, see if there, there's a booster needed down there. That phone is not connected, um, to the internet via, um, um, an earth, uh, um, a, um.
Ethernet.
Ethernet cable. That is running off of, uh, off of the wireless, uh, Verizon four G wireless. Uh, so that's just a simple plug and play. It can also be connected to the ethernet if, uh, if the wireless, um, connection is not strong. But so far in this building, um, we've had no issues with the wireless connectivity.
And the thing that's interesting is when I get a phone call on my phone. On my regular phone, it lights up that I've missed a call.
Okay.
So, I thought that was really interesting. You can't answer it from that phone.
Uh-huh, uh-huh.
But it lights up that I've missed a call.
So, is this more expensive? Because it's, this is essentially a cellphone.
It, 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 it's, well, it's redundant, right? What I was talking about before, if the internet was to go down, it goes off of the wireless network.
Oh, so normally we would have these hardwired.
Correct.
Okay. That's what we really need to test. Because this'll work great, but we need to run it through our own twenty-five.
But I mean, even, even if you, even if you, even if you don't run it through there, it's still working. And, and, and that, it comes part of the service.
Oh, so we don't have to pay more for the way it's set up right now?
No, no, no.
Oh. Then I would, yeah, this is good.
Where is it fitting for?
Are you calling it?
The wireless.
Are you calling the phone?
Oh, oh, no.
Do I have to dial anything?
Verizon.
No.
Four, four G.
Don't dial one, just dial your phone number.
Does it show?
You don't know your own phone number?
It's its own Verizon network. It's its private network.
I mean, then these are simple to set up.
Calling you. Did you get a call?
Your call has been forwarded to an.
Really, chief?
All right. You can call me.
Oh, Rich, you know?
Call me, well, well.
You want mine? Oh, you have my number.
So, it's like what Rich said, it's like a cellphone.
I haven't called you forever. I know. Oh, my God. I feel so neglected. I'm sorry, sir. Are you calling me?
No. Somebody's calling the office.
Somebody's calling my office.
Hi, you reached Richai Hocker. Please leave a message.
Nope, you didn't ring. I'm on wifi and cell.
Call, you wanna call me? I don't, I don't know, I mean, it's.
So far, the demo's not going so well.
You're not doing well, are you doing?
Well, I mean, it, it.
Oh, for two.
It, it's, it's, I think it may be related to your, your cellphone, because it's calling it.
Yeah, I don't know why it's not picking up. Aren't you fancy?
So.
Hello. Hi.
Your phone doesn't work.
One, two, three.
Well, one out of three.
Guaranteed to make one out of three calls.
One out of three calls. You're doing all right.
Buy them. I think, I think the phone is working.
Oh, is that you?
All right. The, the other phones will have no signal here.
Testing.
Testing.
One, two, three, testing.
Feedback, that's free.
The feedback's extra.
Yeah.
So, I mean, um, it appeared to be working fine, uh, this, you know, these last few days. And that's why we want every department to test it out, get their, get their thoughts and, and feelings for it. You know, there's.
What if our internet goes out?
The redundancy, the wireless.
That's what it's on now.
It's on wireless. It's like a cellphone with signal.
Yeah.
Yep.
So, it's basically a cellular phone?
Yeah.
Or it could be connected to the ethernet cable, you know?
Do we get charged differently if it's a cellular?
No.
I would keep it as cell.
You have a cellphone for me? Is this the cellphone for that?
No, this is my cellphone.
Do we have the cellphone for this?
Yeah, the, uh, the fire chief has one, and, and the senior center director has one.
Very interesting.
So, if they miss the call here, it goes onto that phone, or does it ring simultaneously?
You can have it, you can have it go directly to the cell.
So, what if we, the power goes off? Electricity goes off.
Then you're done.
Well, then you get the cellphones at work, right?
Correct.
Yeah, but these, these are done.
Yeah, if the power goes out, this is done, because it's obviously has to be plugged in.
You can hook it to a UPS, but.
Right.
Won't last much. Yeah, but it's.
But that's where we need a generator for the building too.
Correct.
They're cool looking.
Yeah, they are very nice. I tried everything.
They're real simple to use.
Except you can't change the time on the clock.
But is it the correct time?
No, it's not.
No, it's not.
Yeah.
It's an hour, it's an hour and a half.
It probably would get updated if you connect it maybe directly to the ethernet cable for the internet.
Or sometimes the call coming in will set the time.
So, what's the deal on this? What, are they offering us this? Because.
No, it's, this is, this is off of their state contract. So, um, they, uh, provide cities and towns, uh, these services. And, uh, currently, um, where has them? And.
Oh, you can choose wallpapers.
You know, there's different levels of phones that you could get too. There's, there's ones that are not as, um, you know, big of a screen, if you don't need it to be. And then there's ones that have a little bit, you know, larger screen like that one.
Is there cost differences between them?
Yes, yeah.
So, with the bigger screen, it's probably more money?
A little bit more money, yeah.
The thing I liked is it tells you who's calling.
Yeah. Yeah.
And it records the call.
Is that why you don't answer my calls anymore? Like, I'll forward that.
No, it can, it can, it can record the calls as well.
All right.
You know, there's a wifi option, there's a text messaging option. You can have messages, uh, voicemails transferred right to your, um, um, email, if you'd prefer. Bluetooth.
No, I'm good, yeah.
Um, and this company would also, you know, if the, you know, if the town likes all of the, you know, the demo units and different things, they'd be willing to come in and make a presentation to the board. Even though they're on a state contract, they'd be willing to make a presentation to the board and to discuss how they would implement and how they would engineer it all out and what the costs would be.
Now, what happens if we don't do anything?
If, well, if you don't do anything, at some point, this, the current system in this building, um, is, is gonna fail. At some point.
It's dying?
It's dying, it's old.
Can't get parts, right?
Can't get parts.
Yeah, and some phones are dying.
There's, there's security issues with, you can hear other people's conversations.
You can block people on this phone. I just checked to see if I was blocked, Mrs. Dusty.
You are. You are.
I'm not.
Did you get the other size phone to demo also?
Yes.
Oh, okay, good. All right. What do you think is, is the other?
No, I mean, they, 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 they seem very nice. I mean, you know, it's, it's all, you know, what, what, you know, how many? I, I also forwarded them this week, all of our bills, okay? Like I said at the last meeting we had last week, we're paying anywhere between eight hundred to nine hundred dollars a month in, 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 in phone bills, okay? And that's including the, the two wireless phones that we have, three wireless phones we have. So, if we can package that and, and, and save some monthly costs and have it onto one bill and potentially get some free equipment out of it, I think it's a home run for the town.
Yeah.
We gotta see if, if, if these all work.
Can, can they lower the costs? Or is that what we're reviewing right now?
Yeah, we're reviewing that right now. Some of them you can get down to, you know, it depends on how many lines you have and how many lines we're gonna need. And they're, they're looking at them. I mean, like, right now, the, um, police and fire are on, are on Crocker. It's even more expensive than Verizon currently. So, um, you know, there's a potential savings there. We just don't know all of the numbers yet. They're still working on it. And, you know, if we have a change in staff, um, there'll be a, a portal that you could go on and just administrate, you know, change the, um, the voicemail right there, change the person's name on it. You can change the extension, all, all done via the cloud, uh, on a portal. So, um, you don't have to have a company come in and, and go upstairs into a panel and try to find the extension and take that line over to another line and change it around. It's all managed through the cloud and on a portal.
And that, it's, yeah, so when Jim came on, we don't have a phone at this desk anymore in there because I had to use that particular extension upstairs for him because you couldn't, we didn't have any more extensions.
And as things go down, we lose lines because they can't upgrade the system. And we've met about this a, a long time ago. Systems degrading. They don't build these, that, that type of phone or that system anymore. We'd have to spend a lot of money to upgrade the entire system to do that. And, you know. Okay, you're kinda selling me on this, because I like the redundancy with the cellular backup. So, chief, with your, your phones, the Crocker phones, is there redundancy to the system? So, if they go down, they go down.
I don't have any phones.
So, with a cellular backup.
I'd have phones.
You'd have phones. So, if internet went down, boom, cellular kicks in, you still call.
I guess I mean.
Yes.
Yes. But that, that would help you.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Do we rent these, buy these?
What, you, you would purchase them.
Purchase them, okay.
Definitely worth looking into.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm, you're selling me on it.
All right, all right. You know, I just, you know.
I just don't like the purely, the VoIP phone.
I totally agree with you.
Because they just.
I totally agree, and I understand that, that, that hesitation, because, you know, in case the internet does go down. But, you know, when we're looking at companies, Verizon's a big company. And if, and if, and if Verizon is, if we have a problem with Verizon, I feel comfortable that we can make Verizon come out and help us. And, 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 you know, they're not gonna want the bad press of having a town without the ability to have phones. You know? And Verizon's a national company.
I have Verizon.
I have Verizon.
I'm not a fan of Verizon.
Okay, yeah.
I'm not either. I have Verizon, I have landline phones, so.
Do you still have a landline?
Yeah.
It's great.
The only thing that was working in the twenty-eleven.
Yeah.
October storm. All electricity, but the phone still worked.
And, and they, they know, they've done this in other communities. So, I think it's definitely an option that the board could potentially look at, um, you know, doing in the future.
If the cost is similar to what we're paying now, even if it's a little bit more, we get good, good equipment.
Yep.
And I like, I like the redundancy, because right now, if a phone line goes down, if a telephone pole goes down, our phone line goes down, because we're copper wire. And we know, because these phone companies have already told us, Verizon has told us, we're not supporting copper lines anymore. It's not something that they're doing. So, eventually, your landline's gonna go away.
Yeah, I know.
Get a demo.
Yeah. Can I take this home?
We have them until, uh, the end of April.
Does it work if you take it home?
Oh, I don't know. I, I would imagine, I would imagine.
It's trouble.
But nobody knows that phone number, so.
It's a New Jersey phone number, so.
This is?
Yeah. I don't care.
Well, he knows it now, because I just called him.
Yeah.
The only person I called.
Well, I called.
Again, one out of three calls per day is not that bad.
Cuts the workload by two-thirds.
Yeah. Save money.
Yeah.
Less work.
Well, just look at it. If, if, if one of our current phones dies, we can't get a new one.
No, we can't. We gotta do something.
We're dead in the wild.
We gotta do something.
And the VoIP phones, that's just, I've had bad experiences with them, not happy with them. This is, it's basically a cellphone with a wire that does everything your work phone does. So, but it runs through the wifi, so we're not using cellular network. But if we get a better wifi network or internet here, then we potentially improve it. So, I think we got a solution that could be.
Well, I mean, currently, it's not working on any of our bandwidth. So, I mean, it's, it's all operating off of the cellular wireless network from Verizon.
Yeah, that's nice.
It is, yeah.
I cannot get that.
So, all right, yeah, figure out how much it's gonna cost us.
Okay.
If it doubles the price, then we're gonna have to look at something else.
So.
But, uh, you're adding the police department into this too, right?
Yeah, everybody.
Everybody's getting it.
So, uh, uh, another thing that this would correct, instead of having to dial out to police or fire or senior center or sewer or highway, we could just hit an extension, so.
Yeah, because you have local directory on there.
So, you could do extension two hundred, extension three hundred, and have them all, whether they're police, fire, highways, senior center, uh, you could have them all set up. So, you don't have to dial out, you just hit the number, you know, the extension, and there it goes.
You can connect this to a little headset too.
Right.
You have intercom.
So, you can be hands-free.
Intercom, yeah.
Can you, then, have an announcement to all the folks? Hi, everyone.
I think you could, yeah, I'm sure you could do that, yeah.
We can do that with our phones here.
Oh, you can do that, too?
Yeah.
Like town administrators buying lunch.
Wait a second, I just sent out to every department on that one, oh.
Except he can't-
We'll be like, we're coming!
He can't ever understand me when I do an old call.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
He goes, calls me up, what?
Alright, yeah, let's do more research and find out how much it's gonna cost and a little more sold on this. Did you guys wanna look at it? You're getting one anyway soon, or a test drive.
Um, so this week, FinCom met on Tuesday. I, I joined their meeting. Uh, we had the Board of Health in there. We had Quabog presented their, um, their budget. Looks like the Board of Health's budget is going down. Thank you, Board of Health. Um, and, uh, Quabog's, Mr. Duff was in, um, answering questions with, um, the FinCom. Um, and, um, they were very pleased with, uh, you know, the process and, and the communication back and forth uh, with Quabog this year. Um, the FinCom was also looking to make an adjustment, uh, to, um, when articles were due. Uh, they were thinking of, of the April first date, um, so that they have a chance to review articles. So I can certainly move that up at, at FinCom's request. Gives departments a little over two weeks to, uh, to get those in there. Um, and then FinCom was also looking at the date of, um, uh, in order to get the FinCom book out for, uh, the election, they were looking at moving the joint meeting between the Selectmen and FinCom to the twenty seventh of April. Is there any objection, uh, on that date, uh, with the, with the board? It's a Saturday.
So what are we doing?
No, no, that, we already had set that up.
Okay, I, I-
What are we doing on twenty seventh of April?
Joint meeting with FinCom.
Okay.
Oh.
They're buying the donuts, right?
Oh, yeah, that was agreed, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Alright.
That's good, yeah, he said we'd buy the donuts.
April twenty seventh, right?
April twenty seventh, yep.
What time?
A nine.
Now, one year we had all departments come to that, is it all departments coming to that or just Board of Selectmen and FinCom?
Yeah, I mean, I think it could be, uh, anybody who wants to. I don't, I don't know if there's necessarily a requirement. Unless the board wants to make everybody come on a Saturday.
I mean, only if, if you wanna like talk about your budget or something, right?
Yeah, yeah, if there's something.
If you're happy with what you submitted, then don't worry. So nine o'clock, I had it down for ten, just-
Oh, okay. I, I thought Madeline had mentioned nine.
Okay, whatever, just, yeah.
Last night, um, I attended Pathfinder's budget meeting. Uh, I went to Pathfinder, um, as the town's representative. Um, and, um, I have a copy of their budget, um, for the board to review, um, to take a copy of. Um, it was a modest increase, I thought, um, of a little over forty-five thousand dollars from last year. Um, so, uh, last year's, uh, assessment was four forty-one, seven oh six. This year's assessment is four eighty-seven, oh forty-four. We currently have, uh, forty-five students enrolled, um, at Pathfinder.
How many did we have last year?
Forty-five.
Same amount?
Same amount.
What's a percentage increase, did they say?
Little over ten percent.
Okay.
Okay. Cost a lot of money to edu- educate kids these days.
Yep, um, and there's some towns that, that obviously went up, well, you know, a lot more, um, percentage-wise. It's a formula that's based upon how many students we have and our, and, you know, our, our population and, and moderate income. Um, so, um, the, the meeting went very well. We got those numbers in. Uh, also next week, we have a capital planning, uh, meeting at four on, uh, on Wednesday, the thir- uh, the twentieth. Um, I have also scheduled a departmental head meeting. Uh, we had, we've had one, um, beginning of the year. Um, in January, we're gonna do one, um, on the twentieth of March at nine AM. We'll have coffee and donuts as well, um, for the department heads. Um, just to kinda go over as we approach, um, you know, the upcoming budgets, uh, and capital planning requests and, um, you know, uh, going over our, our calendar for the next three months up until annual town meeting. Um, auditors were here this week. Um, so our new auditor from Roselli Clark, uh, and Associates, there was, uh, three auditors here, uh, four auditors here all week. Um, except for today, there was only one gentleman here today. The, the other three were working remotely. Uh, so it's been a very busy week and a very hectic week for, um, for all the departments uh, that are related to the financial aspect of things. I know the auditors had met with me for a little bit. Uh, they met, uh, significantly with, uh, the treasurer's office, the collector's office, the, um, the assessor's office, the town accountant, um, constantly. So, uh, we're providing them all of their new information because it's a new auditing firm. Um, our last year's auditor retired, uh, so we have the new, um, Roselli and Clark. Um, and so we're getting them up to date with all of our information. Um, and that process was this week. There is a, um, a, uh, a legislative, um, slash business development meeting on Monday afternoon, lunch in, in Worcester, um, that I was invited to for Worcester County uh, that I'd like to attend, um, where they're gonna be talking about business development opportunities, uh, in particular for rural towns. Um, and that's in, in downtown Worcester. Um, it's no cost, uh, it was a free invite, but I would ask the board if I could attend. Um, and-
We might have to send somebody with you to protect you through there. Worcester is not, um, I would say a safer community these days. Um, so be careful.
Alright, okay. Um, and, um, also April first, um, A. Martins and Sons is coming back out to the school street, Prospect Street, Richardson Street to address those punch lists, the areas that the board had concerned. April first, that first week, they're gonna be out there. I know that there was a concern at, at sixty-nine Richardson Street. I did, um, feel the call from a resident at sixty-nine Richardson Street. They had a camera go down and it appears as though that, um, their sewer line along, um, with, along with the elbow, the lateral that connects out to the road, um, was dinged um, when a, the water line was being put in. Uh, we brought that to the attention of A. Martins and Sons. Uh, they are going to fix that and repair that, uh, when they're out there. Um, but that was brought to our attention. I did feel the call a few weeks ago, um, and that will be addressed.
And what does the ding mean? What are, what are the symptoms now?
So, um, they, they were concerned of, um, you know, obviously blockage, okay, potential blockage. However, um, the blockage, the main blockage for this resident, from what I, my understanding is, is that it was coming from their lateral because they had a lot of roots that were growing in there that needed to be cleaned out. And that's their, 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 um, their, um, uh, issue that they have to deal with it, you know, on their property. But while they were also cammering that lateral, they noticed that when it came to the street where the elbow connected to the street, the, our, our, our pipe, the main was nicked. Um, and, and it was a little bit caved in. Um, still enough flow there to provide flow, uh, but, um-
You just don't want it to get worse, so it's best to fix it, right?
Worse or, or to, you know, potentially cave in. So they are going to fix it. Uh, I've, I've notified Bill Stordy of this. I said this has to get done, it has to get fixed. Um, he's notified A. Martins and Sons and, um, supposedly the week of April first, they're coming out to fix it along with the other punch list items.
Okay. Anything else, sir?
No.
Okay. Alright. Um, new business. Anybody have any new business?
So I do have new business.
Oh, okay, this is exciting.
So this sort of continues the whole solar thing that, remember, we had talked about Joyce sending a letter? I think we had sent a letter. So they, this, this, I guess the governor's office really is considering creating a solar siting board, which means if solar wants to come to our town, the planning board no longer has any control over the project. It would be the siting board that's on Beacon Hill. And there's a lot of details about that, like who is supposed to watch the project, who approves the project. But basically, we lose every kind of right to control it or, uh, make a decision about it.
So they're running it as a public utility type thing?
Almost, yeah, yeah.
And when we lose control and they use that kinda thing, we have no say at all?
Yeah, they're just gonna run roughshod over the town. So there's a letter due tomorrow, I guess. I don't, it, it hasn't even written yet. Um, but maybe I could, if, if it's okay, I'll send it on behalf of the board.
Please do so.
Opposing it?
Yeah, yeah. And then there's another, uh, comment period that goes until like July or something. But there's one thing due tomorrow, so, and, um-
Yes, sir.
Okay, so I'll send something.
That is not gonna work in the benefit of the town.
Yeah.
We have no interest in that and, you know.
Kind of cruel.
It is, yeah, there's a lot of people who aren't happy about it.
It's overstepping.
Yeah. Yeah, it's very authoritarian.
Well, unless they were gonna appoint Joyce to the board.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
You know, this, this whole solar thing, it's just been rammed down people's throats and it's such a plagued communities because it's not fairly being, it's not being distributed fairly. Because you don't see these sites going in Wellesley and Wayland and stuff. You see them in rural towns.
Yeah.
And they buy up. Why people buy, move to rural towns? The, the farms and these beautiful wooded areas where people go to hike and, you know, ride their dirt bike or whatever, and the next thing they know, they have this solar facility there that's, you might as well just throw up a skyscraper with all the steel and glass things on these things. And it's like, it just ruins the, the look of the community. It is, we're not getting any benefits for it. And then they charge you more for electricity. So it's not like it's bringing your electricity prices down. You literally, when you opt in for green, green electricity, you're paying more. It makes no sense.
I, I was born in Guatemala and they call it the eternal spring because you see flowers all the time. If I bring one of those plants over here, it will be really nice in the summer and then it dies because it's not meant to be here. Solar arrays in this area don't produce the same amount of light if they are closer to the equator. So that, that's why they, these projects change from owner to owner because the ROI, the return of investment is not quick enough.
Yeah.
They don't produce. Somebody else is making the money building the solar arrays, not, we're not benefiting. Yeah.
Average two hours a day in Massachusetts of sunlight that can be used for solar over the year. So if you think about all the cloudy days we've had in the past month-
It's nothing.
There's nothing being produced, you know? So you average it all out.
We lose all the oxy- oxygen from the woods, you know, the trees and everything. And all the properties of, you know, containing the water, animals suffer.
And that, that's, that always irked me because they're like, we need to go green. Let's cut down the forest. What?
Yeah.
It's like, you're ta- you're taking away, you're trying to reduce carbon by taking away the thing that removes carbon from the air.
Yeah.
So how does that make sense? It, it, it's like, I, nobody could explain it, like, well, they shouldn't be removing the trees. Then they shouldn't be moving to rural areas. Put them in brown zones. Put them on the roofs of skyscrapers.
Yeah.
Put them in those areas. Don't clear cut a hundred acres of land to put panels in.
Yeah.
Cause it, it, it just makes no sense. God bless you. And then when you got seventeen fields in a town of, how many acres of it, we up to now? Of cleared land for solar?
I think seven hundred.
So we lost seven hundred acres of pristine land in our town for solar just for them to charge us more for our electricity.
No sense.
It makes no sense at all. Mr. Kundra?
There was a song from my generation. One of the lines in it was, "To make paradise, put up a parking lot." To, to pay for paradise.
To pay for paradise, right?
To make paradise, put up a parking lot.
Okay. By the way, we missed you last week.
I know, I heard. I was watching on WCAT.
Did you have some of the information?
Oh, I think we have, so twelve sites, fifty-five megawatts, seven hundred and seven acres of solar, two hundred and twenty acres cleared. So we've used a little over five percent of our land on solar.
That's what I call a big scarf from space.
So we lost five percent of our town for solar.
Yeah.
When other towns, they complain if they get one.
Yeah.
Suck it up, buttercup. We've done our part. You know, I-
We need more-
Yeah, I'm so sick and tired of hearing that. Put it on a roof somewhere. But yes, you have my support.
Okay, me too.
Alright.
Uh, anything else for new business?
Yes, sir.
So I, I, I have, um, two items on, that I think we should look into. Um, one is their regionalization with the school. We should review that and either, um, vote to support it or vote to not support it, uh, with the regionalization, the new regionalization contract and whether to support the addition of North Brookfield to the regional contract. Uh, cause again, this is something that's gonna affect the whole town and I think it should be presented to the board on what the advantages would be to do that and, you know, how it's gonna benefit the town. Because if it's not gonna benefit the town, then why would we do it? Or if it is a benefit of the town, why aren't we doing it?
How is it gonna benefit us?
But how is it gonna benefit us and how long is it gonna take? Uh, if there's just a bunch of hypotheticals and, well, we don't know, we don't know, is it gonna be a wise decision to do something like that?
Better to wait, then.
And, you know, I think we really need to get on this subject and see if it's something that we're gonna support or not. Um, so we should schedule a meeting where we use this, well, we have this as one of our topics to be able to discuss and whether we're gonna support it or not.
So somebody sent them out. Did you send them, send them out? Okay, I haven't looked at them because I, I'll wait until we actually have something on an agenda.
Right.
Right.
Well, you, you got, you got a copy of the new, you got a copy of the proposed regional contract, right?
Yes, I got that from Derek and I sent it to, individually to all the Selectmen.
Okay, so we got that. I would suggest looking at it and just say, look at it and see if you, anything sticks out to you that you might have questions for because sometimes when, I, I would invite the school here, you know?
The school board?
Mr. Duff and whoever's proposing this, bring them here and let's, let's hear what, what the advantages of doing this is. You know, how is the town, town gonna benefit from it? Um, and-
Derek, have you seen any cost analysis or anything like that that would-
They, they hire a consultant to show, you know, how it will go.
So one thing, it's not on the agenda, so we really can't discuss this topic. We can set up a meeting to discuss the topic.
Yeah, that's fine.
And give them fair opportunity. Let Mr. Duff know this is gonna be on the agenda and if it's something that they want to happen, to present it to us. I don't wanna hear, well, you had one Selectman in the meeting, because that's one Selectman that's there. And I don't think you're convinced either way, are you?
No, I, I, I am not. I-
So now it's time to propose it to the full board and see if we're, they can convince us to support this. Cause I can tell you right now, if we're supporting it, we should send a letter to the community saying, hey, we support this. This is great for our community. If we don't support it, we send a letter to the, the other two communities, West Brookfield and North Brookfield, saying we don't support this going forward, so.
Wendy, want me?
Yeah, let's pick a date. Or you wanna see what, when they're available?
I would say-
Call Mr. Duff tomorrow.
Call him, but look at two weeks. Give him, give him ample time, two weeks.
So tentative twenty eighth?
T tentative the twenty eighth. But I don't wanna wait till, well, after we vote and we'll, we'll present it to you. No, we need to have ample time. So within the next two weeks, three weeks, fine, but the sooner the better. We can't do it next week. We're gonna give them plenty of time, so.
And is, is, would it be Duff or would it be the school board itself that's-
There's this, there's a committee for that, just for that. You know, includes all, yeah, Selectmen from each town.
And, and again, let them know. Come here. I would let Mr. Duff know and the-
Whoever needs to-
Let him notify the committees.
Yeah.
And say, hey, notify the, um, individuals that are presenting this to the town that we want them here.
Mm-hmm.
And if they fail to show up, we'll have to make a decision based on that and based on what you've learned and what we've learned. And right now, you're not convinced, I'm not convinced. I don't know where you stand.
I haven't heard anything really about it.
We don't know anything about it.
Convince me, yeah.
Convince us. Um, but, you know, if we can't, can't be convinced on it, we can't support it. If you can't tell us we, why we need to support it, then- If you can't tell us when, why we need to support it, then.
Yeah, they have to sell it to the public.
Yeah, sell it to the public, sell it to the town, you know, sell it, why, why is this beneficial to us?
Cause all three towns have to pass.
Right.
One town,
And the public.
Doesn't passes, it's a no-go.
And the public needs to know about this, okay? The public needs to be aware of what they're getting into, because they're getting into a twenty-year contract with three towns now, instead of just two. And so far, the two isn't working out so well, okay? So convince us how adding a third one into this equation makes it better.
Yes.
Okay, so let's try to get that scheduled, and Mr. Farrar, if you can work on that too. And, um, that is of high importance, um, to be done. And then, uh, budget review. Are we good with their budget? Because we, we presented the budget, but we haven't had real time to sit down and review it. Are we good with the budget? And are we gonna support it?
So.
Because I think at some point, we need to vote and say, we support the budget as is is, or,
Well, so.
We'd like to say, see a ten percent reduction in the budget.
Yeah, so we can't get into a discussion about it anyway now?
No.
Right, so, yeah, put it on a meeting and, and let's.
Budget discussion, we could probably do the same night then.
Okay.
Sure.
Potentially the twenty-eighth.
Yeah, potentially the twenty-eighth, the school budget, whether we're gonna vote to support it or not.
So let's not load up that meeting, because.
Yeah, we don't have a lot of stuff in that meeting, right?
Keep it lean.
We don't have anything on the agenda right now.
Not yet, really. We'll have to.
Because these are gonna take a lot of time, and right now, we've been here since,
Yeah.
Two thirty this afternoon, yeah? So, when people say, what do they, the Selectmen do all day, we've all been here since two thirty this afternoon, working on stuff, so.
When was I, the IT companies coming next week?
Next week.
We have the dog hearing next week.
Yeah, the dog.
Oh, really?
Yeah, another dog hearing.
Six o'clock?
Six o'clock, dog hearing.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yay!
Is this, is this the dog that bit the ACO?
Yes.
All right.
Not the one.
I'm thinking, I don't know if I have to recuse myself for that one. You're gonna have to look into that.
We can look into that.
Yeah, see if I have to recuse myself, because if she's, she's the victim.
Okay.
Then that kinda brings me in that, that zone.
You know? Probably, yeah.
Because.
I'll, I'll check into that.
Yeah, because there's a few leaks of it.
Right, yeah, I don't want anybody saying, well, she's your wife, that's why you decided this way or that way.
Yeah, leave it to us.
Yeah, I'm probably gonna recuse myself from that meeting, the, the dog part.
Yeah.
Because again, I don't want any accusations. Okay, just remind me to recuse myself, please.
Will do.
Cause I'm gonna forget in the morning.
I got it.
All right, thank you. And Mister Farrar, did, were you waiting on something for us? Okay, all right, so, regionally, regionalization and budget, um, for the school. And those will be votes.
Okay.
So make sure you get anticipated vote for that.
Will do.
So I'm good with new business, I think I'm good, yeah. Mister Belize?
I'm done for today.
Yeah, we're all done today. All right, old business.
Nothing.
Nothing?
No, sir.
Nothing? Nothing, all right. Correspondence, invitation to participate in our Community Reading Day at the Elementary School Thursday, April twenty-fifth, two thousand, well, two thousand twenty-four, nine AM, RSVP due by April eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four.
You can sign me in.
So, you wanna read? Read for the school?
You have to RSVP them.
So, there's a thing in the booklet. Mister Farrar, are you gonna read to the school?
Yes, I will.
Awesome, very good. All right, I probably will not be doing that because, well, that's, that's a day off for me. But I could barely read these, never mind a whole book to some kids.
They can give you a kindergarten.
There's audiobooks.
With the big font.
Just pictures. Look at the pictures.
Like the kindergartners or something.
I'll ask for the Spanish class.
Oh, there's.
Here you go, yeah, very good. All right, so if anybody wants to do that, uh, be an awesome opportunity and a little bit of outreach for the town to the school kids too. Very good. All right, um, and then, okay, comments and concerns, we have any comments and concerns?
I don't.
No, sir. No, sir.
No.
It's the contract, I was waiting, I was hoping.
Well, I was out last week because I had pulled the back muscle.
Oh, I'm sorry, sir.
Not as sorry as I was. But I did watch it.
Very good.
And I did hear you say, where's Joe?
Absolutely. You're, you're basic, you're, you're part of our meetings now.
And Ray did fill in for you.
He did, he tried.
Daylight savings time.
Great.
So what do you have for us tonight, sir?
All right, um, our secretary Jessica came back this week.
Oh, great, very good. Is that good news?
It is.
Okay.
It is, she, she had a hard time, but it's good.
Okay.
She missed us so much, right?
No, she misses her baby.
Oh.
Yeah, it's tough.
And it's one of those things that I'm so grateful she's back, because she knows where everything is.
Yes.
I thought, yeah, don't just run into a four-day week. Start off easy, build yourself back up to where you were, so that the town is gonna be the benefit of it.
So you guys have given her a little bit of flexibility to help her out? Very good?
Like I told her, if you really need something, Leslie's just down the hall.
There's plenty of people to help.
It's one of those things that, well, I suppose I'm like the other guys, and we bring the baby in so we can take a peek.
No, I told her to bring the baby, we'll just take turns babysitting.
Well, there you go.
We are family friendly here.
Yeah.
Very good, what a good job. Thank you, sir, anything else? Anybody else have anything?
Zoom?
No. Anybody on Zoom have anything? Or comments and concerns? No, all right. So moving on, next meeting, Thursday, March twenty-first. It is a nuisance dog hearing, um, and a regular meeting. And that is at six PM. And, I don't think we have anything else? There's a lot of meetings, I think. Right, so, yep, next meeting is a regular meeting with a nuisance dog hearing involving, and beginning the meeting. So people are aware, it's probably gonna take a little while, because nuisance dog hearings take a while sometimes. So, when you're watching, um, other than that.
Motion to adjourn, second.
All in favor?
Richard Hacker, aye.
David Bellis, aye.
David DeCray, aye, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.